All right, we're streaming and recording and the mics are live. It is six o'clock. I will call the Monday, December 8th, regular board meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Lori Zarbach.
Here.
Don Kuski.
Here.
Andrew Coop.
Here.
Phil Henkel.
Here.
Kevin Jensen.
Here.
Miriam Barbara.
Here.
Bert Richard.
Here.
Nellie Shire.
Here.
And Doug Kuchko.
Here.
And Randy, was a proper notice given for this meeting?
Yes, please be advised that public notice of this meeting as required by sections nineteen point eight four and sixty five point nine zero, the Wisconsin statutes, has been properly given. Such notice consisted of a notice and agenda to the official newspaper, the Rice Lake Chronotype, to the Eau Claire Leader, and to radio stations WJMC and WAQE indicating the date, time, and place of the meeting. Such notice was given more than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting.
Thank you. It does appear that a proper notice was given for this meeting. We will now stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'd like to welcome everyone here tonight, and we are at the month, or part of the month, where we get to recognize some of our students. It's one of the most exciting things we, as board members, get to do, is see some of our students and hear about their wonderful activities that they're involved in and how well they're doing in the classroom and, and as students in the Rice Lake Area School District. So congratulations, and we will start with the Rice Lake High School. And, oh yes, and over here by Mr. Droste and Bert, we have a little spot for parents, grandparents, aunts, uncles, whoever wants to get in there. They can videotape, they can record, they can take pictures, whatever, right from that good location.
Good evening. Corporal Holkey, principal at the high school, and I have the honor to stand in for Jen Kazakowicz, one of Steven Anderson's teachers. Steven Anderson is a junior at Rice Lake High School and a great, great student. And some of the things that Ms. Kazakowicz is recognizing Steven for tonight is academic excellence, perseverance, and resilience. Steven has shown a ton of growth this school year in the area of success skills, perseverance, resilience, and independence. He is always willing to work hard in class, participates fully, and contributes to the positive school climate. And these are the reasons we are very proud of Steven and excited for him to earn this special recognition for his efforts.
Rice Lake Middle School.
Good night, good evening, everybody. Josh Olin, Tracy Miller, sixth grade at the middle school, and we're here to present to this wonderful lady, wonderful award who's much deserving. I guess there's an old, yeah, the common saying is if you had twenty-three or twenty-four of them in your class, life would be, well, this is one of them. So Olivia here, Olivia Wilger, is an absolute joy to have in our classes academically. She brings her best efforts and eager attitude to class each and every day. Olivia goes the extra mile when material is more difficult for her without hesitating and complaining. In addition, her positive outlook, friendly smile, and encouraging demeanor bring an authentic style of leadership to her classmates. But most impressive is Olivia's all-around perseverance and resilience. She embraces difficult learning situations and is not afraid to take classroom risks. She may not always succeed the first time, however, you can count on her getting back up to try again by asking questions and digging deeper into her inquiries. So Mrs. Miller and I are so proud of you, Olivia. You bring so much sunshine into our classrooms. You have no idea, and your future is even brighter. So thank you for being you. So congratulations, Olivia.
Hilltop Elementary.
Okay, hi, I'm Sarah Branham. This is Nevada Hansen, and I teach kindergarten. She's a kindergarten student. And I nominated Nevada for her leadership, citizenship, perseverance, and resilience. Hilltop is focusing on kindness this year, and when I think of a student showing compassion and kindness to everyone, I think of Nevada. If a student in our class is feeling sad or hurting, Nevada is one of the first students to notice. She will go out of her way to check on others and try to make them feel better. The way Nevada shows excitement in the simplest moments just makes you smile and brings joy to all the, everyone around her. Anytime I give her suggestions on how to make her work better, or if I remind her to focus, she has a positive attitude and tries her best. I love how Nevada is just always herself. She's very upbeat and in a good mood most of the time. Her bubbly personality helps make the classroom a better place, and her thoughtfulness is a great example to anyone who encounters her.
All right, Tainter Elementary.
Hi, I'm Ashley German, kindergarten teacher at Tainter, and I'd like to introduce you Harper Bartz. I nominated Harper, not only is she an excellent student in the classroom academically, but she's just a really great leader at the age of five. She comes to school every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn, always excited for anything that I have planned. It doesn't, it could be the smallest thing, and she's just ready to do it. If a friend needs help in the classroom, she's just that kind-hearted student that's gonna help that person as well. So congratulations, Harper. We're very proud of you.
Now we have two for Hoggan Elementary, so we'll start with one. Whichever teacher wants to go first, and we'll start there.
Ready, Mom?
Yep.
Okay. I'm Mrs. Dennis, and I have, Kaia wasn't able to come to the last school board meeting, so she's here tonight, so that's why we're going twice. I nominated Kaia for Student of the Month for her perseverance and resilience. She is truly a delight. She comes to my classroom, works diligently, never complains, early any classroom she goes to. She utilizes strategies she has taught and puts them to good use wherever she is in the building. She wants to know what she got wrong, so she can make a note to herself to do better next time. She wants to better understand her learning, and it is very refreshing. She's a student who is always trying and looking to get better at what she is learning and doing. She has her own sense of style, and she owns it. Every day she has a headband on of some kind of sort, and it's, she's just, is amazing. So I see her owning her own sense of style in her learning as well. So she knows who she is and what she needs to do, and she does that so she can be successful, and she works hard to achieve her goals.
And Hoggan Elementary.
I'm Mrs. Extran. I teach kindergarten at Hoggan, and this is Ernie. I nominated Ernie for his academic excellence, creativity, leadership, citizenship, and perseverance. And Ernie is a very enthusiastic and successful learner. He is a creative thinker, and he gets really excited to make connections about what he's experienced outside of school with the school. He also is hardworking, and he puts forth his best effort in every subject area, and he isn't hesitant at all to do hard things. And Ernie is a very good role model to his classmates. He's eager to help others. He always has a smile on his face. He has a positive outlook, and he's kind, and he shows respect to his fellow students and to teachers. Ernie helps to make our classroom a great place to learn and grow together. So congratulations, Ernie.
Hi, Ernie. I'm Bert.
Good one anyways.
All right, I would like to congratulate all our students that were recognized this evening, and to let you know that your names will be added to the drawing. And at the end of the school year, we will be drawing names out of a dish, and some lucky winners will receive a Chromebook. So good luck in the drawing at the end of the school year. And at this time, we'll take a brief moment. If anybody wants to leave, you're welcome to stay, but.
Good idea. Maybe left your car running. I don't know who is prouder there, grandpa or Ernie. I don't know.
Thanks for repping the G, Josh. Thanks for repping the G.
Take care.
Goals under control.
All right, we will get the meeting going again. We have nobody for appearances, so we will move on then. I would entertain a motion to approve the regular session meeting minutes from Monday, November twenty-fourth. Has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and the minutes have been approved. Next, we have our consent agenda, where we have our monthly budget and cash reconciliation report, the board bills, and we have four employment resignations and no employment recommendations at this time. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion has been made. Is there a second? Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? See none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, and that consent agenda has been approved. Next, we get into our reports section, where we'll start off with the 2025 Education Foundation Growth Grant Award recipients.
Yes, so just a little bit about the Education Foundation of Rice Lake, and Lori Zarbach was a part of this for.
A long time.
A long time, a long time. And the Education Foundation of Rice Lake is an independent, not-for-profit organization whose purpose is to help Rice Lake School District teachers throughout the district and students excel in programs that are not funded by public tax dollars. The foundation has created an endowment, which in turn helps provide and sustain district-wide opportunities for educational excellence. And the mission of the Education Foundation of Rice Lake is to nurture excellence through private funding of innovative educational programs that inspire kindergarten through high school students and teachers to achieve excellence. And the Education Foundation of Rice Lake is a tax-exempt charitable endowment from which the principal is never used. Only interest earned from the investment of principal and donations received are ever spent. And to date, the foundation has awarded well over $100,000 to staff members throughout the Rice Lake Area School District and the students within to help with projects. And so this evening, we have a few people here to talk about their, what they received this year and what that's going to. And Pete, that's the first one, the first link Colleen had on the agenda, so it's you.
Thank you again for inviting us to kind of speak. So I was part of two grants, or it's been many grants, for the Education Foundation of Rice Lake over the year, who's been an integral part in growing kind of competitive robotics in our community. So I'm just kind of here more than anything to give you an update as to how some of those funds have been used recently. So one, at the high school level or with Warrior Robotics, just an invitation. Two, we do have our regional tournament coming up this Saturday, December thirteenth. That is in the Ole Olson Gym. It's pretty much just gonna run matches, more or less run from nine-thirty to probably about four o'clock in the afternoon. Open to the public, free of charge. We invite many people to come and check out what's going on. This year, it, to date, it's actually the largest regional tournament, regional level tournament in the state right now. So I think we're up to actually thirty-four teams as of this morning, so it's gonna be a pretty big-sized tournament. And I think that's kind of, without the Education Foundation of Rice Lake, there's no way Rice Lake would have become a destination for competitive robotics, and now it is. I'm getting people from all over the state, sometimes the UP, sometimes Minnesota, that are coming to our tournament because they heard there's pretty good competition. So they, they want to take it, check it out. This year, at the high school level, we have eight teams. I've, our program got so big, we were, we were competing with up to twelve teams that the national or international, I guess, the REC Foundation, who governs all of this, basically said that bigger programs like us were kind of limited to how many, what percentage of a given tournament can be made from one organization. So we've had to kind of like have kind of small, less teams, but kind of bigger teams. So we still have quite a few students involved, but we're actually competing with less teams, and I actually think it's kind of been good because it even gets the key. Instead of working in groups of three, kids are learning how to group, work in groups of four and five, which is a different skill set than triads. And actually, in many cases, proving actually more effective, I think, this year, and maybe taking some of the stress off of some of our more competitive teams. So we have over thirty Rice Lake High School kids that are competing. At the lower levels, St. Joe's has had a program that has, Education Foundation of Rice Lake has supported through a grant as well that has, has just blown up. So they have thirty-four kids on nine different robot teams, everything from eight-year-old third graders to eighth graders. So just this last Saturday at St. Joseph's School, we had, I think, forty-one teams from all over the state that came and competed. So that program continues to grow, and because of that growth there and that success there, it's growing within our county. So this part of grants and community support has led to development of the Barron County Vex IQ League, which we started last year. So last year, that was Rice Lake Middle School, which was able to start a program with quite a few teams, a lot of student interest to start out with last year, as well as St. Joe's. So this year, that has gone to Barron Middle School. So Barron Middle School now has five teams competing, and so about four times over the winter, we, we gather for a kind of a, in the evening, for an ongoing tournament. And then we also kind of compete in some Saturday tournaments spread across the winter. So again, Barron County is growing. I know even at the tournament this Saturday, I have, I've got to the point where I've, I have so many other school districts calling me, wanting advice on how to govern, like Cumberland and Phillips, Wisconsin. And I will go on and on to many smaller districts that want to get something going in their school. And I've just basically at this point said, you just need to come to the tournament because I can't take an hour with you to talk with all of you. So we actually have a lot of, a lot of smaller school districts that are kind of looking into starting programs that might be there on Saturday to, to kind of learn about what that's, what it's all about. Pretty, so pretty neat. So just in general, we, just in our community, in Rice Lake, Barron alone, we have over a hundred kids kind of now competing in Vex Robotics, which is pretty cool. I think the reason why that's happened, Education Foundation Grant has been huge. We can't, we couldn't grow and get to that sustainable growth, that point we needed to, without that support. And it wasn't just a one-year or two-year thing. It was about a four-year kind of investment. And they are not the only community members who've been extremely generous. And just to kind of, I just want to recognize for Warrior Robotics, McCain Foods, again, is giving $10,000 this year as kind of our program-level sponsor. But other people have come involved, so Los Automation and Link Ford have now contributed funds for our current tournament to help sponsor that. Rice Lake Weighting Systems is supporting the Rice Lake Middle School program at a $6,000 level. We've gotten funds from the Rice Lake Celebrity Classic for both Warrior and Spartan Robotics in order to kind of maintain the league. And then 3M continues to kind of donate to Warrior Robotics as well. So these programs, they are, they're expensive, and unfortunately, they don't get cheaper. Parts get more expensive, and travel gets more expensive. And so without so many different willing people and organizations kind of coming together to kind of help us out, we wouldn't be able to kind of sustain this growth. And now I think for, it looks like about the seventh year in a row, we, we just continue to grow. So pretty cool. Again, invite you, come on out, if even if you could stop for a half hour and just check out some matches. I know the high school right now, we're pretty excited. We got a couple teams that have been doing it for a long time, and I think they're starting to kind of put everything together, and they, they are pretty competitive. So they want to, they want to do well. So thank you guys for your time. I appreciate it.
Christie Thursday, I think, is coming up. And Mr. Peterson, it's gonna be like a high of minus one on Saturday, so why not stay inside and come watch, right?
Good evening. I'm here to talk about the signs that you've seen in our community. I had sent a few to Randy, so that if you haven't seen them, you can see them on the screen here. The kids, these kids are from the middle school, and the one that was above it was some kids from Hilltop Elementary, the long kids from our community. These signs have been put up across the district at our local schools, and they were, our, our idea was that we wanted to promote community pride, spread kindness and inclusion to everyone, and encourage neighborhood cohesion. Because what the research shows us is that positive messaging provides a tool to improve our mental being. It also improves, helps us reduce stress. It fosters a sense of well-being, and it encourages positive behavior. The kids have been helping us with these signs. Each month, we switch them out. The kids have been putting them out in our schools. So the middle school kids come over from, over to Hilltop to my office. They pick some signs out, and they go out and put them in their schools, and we've been doing that with the schools of the Hilltop High School. Counselors have been bringing some kids over, and then they go out in their cars. That, I think they're the helpers in the office, come and gather signs and put them out. And Sheri from Tainter takes her kid, some signs back and has her kids help out. So we've been really trying to have the kids be involved and help design them as well. So we currently have, and we currently have twenty-six signs we've published already through Amazon, and ten more are ready to be purchased. And we have about twenty, enough dollars to buy about total of twenty-six more through our grant. So we've been really appreciative of the grant we earn through the education grant system. Right now, we're having a little trouble with the snow because we're not sure how we're going to get those out. Actually, some of them have gone missing because I think the snowplow men have either picked them up or I'm not sure where. So I have to search those out this week and find out where they might have went. But we, next year, we are gonna put some more thought into what we might have to do for when the winter months come through. Yes?
I know, I know, I know.
Yes, Phil. Yes, Phil?
Here's off a hammer drill, and the long eighth-inch masonite, and just drill a couple holes in two-by-fours that match the wires, and that's how you do it.
Awesome, awesome.
There we go. Sounds like he's going to bring those by later this week.
He lost me at hammer drill.
I'll be calling you, Phil. But we've had a lot of positive comments and positive reactions to these signs. Community members have commented to us how much they enjoy seeing the change every month when we change them out. People have commented, it's nice to see change, we, nice to see the different ones throughout the schools. It'd be great to have more signs even put in different public places that we could see along Main Street and different places like that. So we're hoping to continue this, continue this project next year, and we're still thinking through of how we can do that. Natalie mentioned to me this, a week ago or so, that she had talked to Roger Britton, and he is working with some students right now currently. He's doing a graphic design program, and he's going to have some of those kids do some signs for us as kind of a project for them to do in their classroom. And so there's a lot of ways that we've been thinking about different ways we can continue this project next year, and we may apply for another grant. So, but we, the kids, as you can see, have enjoyed this, and we are really appreciative of the grant money. So, any questions you might have about that? Yeah.
I think you have a great opportunity to go out to businesses. They would, I mean, I would love, I mean, I would put this up Boys and Girls Club, but I think you'd have private businesses. I mean, Dawn, you could have one right out in front of your dentist's office. I mean, this is a huge opportunity for us to just spread this throughout the community, and I think there's a sustainability right there that you could go and say, hey, who wants to buy a Be Kind sign for 20 bucks? And they might.
And that has, that's been on our.
I almost drove off the road, because the first time I went by one, I wanted to see what politician was on the other side. And it was like, no, somebody actually just did a nice message.
Yeah, no politicians involved.
Oh, it was great.
It'd be cool to pepper our community with them, so I love it.
We're glad, we're glad that you.
Mrs. Thurs, we may put you in touch with the high school. I was just kind of looking at Mrs. Johnson and Mr. Bohleke, I don't know if we want to put them on the spot, what's that? Oh, don't say anything yet. All right, well, we may have an option at the high school coming where, yeah, where we can print those in-house.
We're not sure yet, so we didn't.
Yeah.
Two pictures, too.
Yeah, awesome.
Thank you.
Very cool.
You bet. All right. And Mrs. Marsh.
Hello, thanks for having us. I'm Amy Marsh, I think I know most of you here, but for those I don't, I'm an occupational therapist with the school district, one of two. I work in just about every building that we have. So when we moved 4K and early childhood to Hilltop this year with the addition, we had some limitations on our playground. And I think one of our biggest, as an OT, one of my biggest pushes is to make sure that we have inclusivity on our playground. You know, playgrounds are huge for social-emotional learning and any kind of like, socialization and play for our regular ed peers, but also our special ed peers. So when we brought such a huge number of special ed children to Hilltop, we really needed to expand what we were offering. So I did a grant for sensory-inclusive tunnel, which is part, we are starting, this is our initial part of the playground that we are doing. So the purpose of it is just to provide an environment that all kids can play on. So from our littles, bigger kids, special needs, not special needs, to provide opportunities for all of the, you know, self-regulation, social-emotional learning, and everything that they need. So, it's been really well-used, the kids love it, and we've been really happy with it so far, so we'll look to expand that in the future. Any questions?
Let's see, on the side of it there, you want to talk about that for just a second?
All of the different panels? Yep, so all of the different, when we talk about sensory smart, we're talking about different experiences that kids can interact with to provide different input to their sensory system. So there's tactile panels that are different textures and touches, there's auditory panels that provide different sounds to kids, there's see-through panels, so kids can interact from inside to outside, so we have some visual stimulation that way. You can access on this specific tunnel, you can access from the inside and the outside. It's also a really great tunnel for gross motor development, it's very close to the ground, so kids, even if we have kids that are wheelchair-bound, or kids with any kind of orthopedic or any kind of impairment at the time, they can access that and get in and out of it with their peers. So, it's a really nice piece of equipment. So, we do have, like, on Hilltop's playground, when it was redone, there is some nice, smaller things for our younger kids, but it's really limited for when we have kids with disabilities. So this is just a very nice addition to that. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we will move into the Rice Lake Middle School Course Description Guide. This is the second reading. I'm not aware of any changes or anything from the first reading, so with that, I would entertain a motion to approve that. Motion has been made, is there a second?
That's it.
Motion has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that Course Description Guide book has been approved. Next is the High School 26-27 Course Description Guide. And again, I don't believe there's any changes from the first reading, so I would entertain a motion to approve that guide.
So moved.
Action has been made and seconded, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that one has been approved as well. So now we get into the Finance Committee meeting update. Doug?
Yes, we met on Thursday, December 4th, at 3:30, all members were present, statement of notice was given, approved the minutes. We discussed the beginning discussion with regards to the use of district facilities with the city of Rice Lake. We've had multiple agreements over the years, and, well, we just need to look at getting that updated and come to a new agreement, as it's been a while since we completed the last one. We looked at a network addition for our health insurance plan, and discussed potential changes with regards to that. We talked about the 26-27 budget, and looked for some options to reduce the budget deficit. Talked about OPEB, and the current, and discussing the current language as it's currently presented, and maybe looking at future changes. We reviewed and approved the bills and set our next date for Wednesday, January 7th, at 3:30.
Any questions?
It's very efficient.
All right, thank you for that update, Doug. Next, we have the Policy and Legislative Advocacy Committee meeting update. We have the first reading for Policies 342.41, along with the rule, Exhibit 1 and 2, 3, 4, and 5. And then Policy 342.5 with the rule, Policy 343.3 with the rule, Policy 352.2 with two exhibits. And this is a first reading, so if you have any questions on any of those, any comments, please let Randy or I know, and we'll take that back to the committee. Otherwise, this will be coming, these will be coming back for a second reading at our next, at our next meeting. Any questions? All right. Next, we have, going to the information section, our Communications and Public Relations Committee meeting minutes from December 2nd. Those were in our packet. Bert, you got anything? Want to?
Yeah, just to highlight the meeting, the middle school leadership team gave a report and talked about starting an academic recognition task force. They talked about the middle school play attendance and the high school. We heard a lot, at least I heard a lot downtown, about how good Mamma Mia was.
Yeah.
And also discussed reset with the standard-based grading. High school leadership team, they discussed parent-teacher conferences, and maybe because of attendance, there might be some options out there that they can look at. They got a group looking now, and seeing if there's some different things that they can do to improve that. And they did have some recent business tours, and conservancy visits. They have a thing going called Warrior Buddies, up to 20 students, high school students visiting and working with other schools. Tainer and Hoggins Leadership Team, Parent-Teachers Conference, Midwinter Math and Literacy Screening, PBIS Award Reward Lunch with a mystery guess. Never did see with a mystery guess, but. Then we talked about District Communications Update with Erin Johnston, different things that have happened throughout the, well, I guess I would say the first semester since summer. What has been livestreamed, what has been partnerships, and what we've done with a chronotype, or what we're going to be doing with exchange students. Then there was internal and external public relation, wins and opportunities. And we looked at ways our community could be informed about some of our larger facility projects that are taking place right now. And there's quite a discussion on athletics and the event calendar, which kind of doesn't exist, other than online. And of course, I brought up right away that I hang around with a lot of old folks, and they don't go to the computer, and they keep asking me if there's any kind of copy of what the schedules are going to be. And thanks to Bethany Luther, and they came out with one, and we're going to have a few people look at that, so that we do have a hard copy, much to the demise of people who really follow that computer. Anyway, and we got to make sure our communication is accurate, and we give some of those exterior folks the right dates and everything. Erin said she would, you know, try to help with that. Next meeting is January 27th, and that was it.
All right, thank you for that update. Next, school drill evaluation from the Rice Lake High School.
Yeah, just part of the, part of the information that Colleen, I think after tonight, will submit and do her year-end submission to the Department of Justice, but this one is just from Rice Lake High School, and doing a whole drill and going through our protocols. We follow the "I love you guys" protocols, and yeah, just the different things happening there, and they do an evaluation of that, look at what went well, maybe areas where they can make improvements. All of that's going to go to Department of Justice later this week.
Any questions?
Is that a federal program or state?
State, yeah. Yep, and so we have to, you know, like when you approve our safety plans, or periodically, we have to bring these in front of you as a board as well. Yeah, that's a part of the, part of the state of Wisconsin.
Any other questions? All right, then we'll move on to the WSB Public Policy Correspondent update. Phil?
Okay, thank you. Before I forget it, because I've never remembered it once in the past, I think the next video update at noon is a week from Wednesday, so it's usually worthwhile. Veto, the governor, Governor Evers, received a number of bills to sign or veto, and he vetoed a number of bills related to, or of interest to school districts. He vetoed the bill that was passed to give guaranteed good access to high schools by military recruiters, and I think that was on the basis of local control, he said. He vetoed the bill that would require institutions of higher learning to compile outcome data, which could be used by high school career guidance counselors. In other words, how much does an education cost, and how much good does it do a student by compiling that debt? And I don't remember what his reasoning was, I think he said they were already burdened enough with red tape or something like that. And he vetoed the bill that would expand qualifying teacher prep programs to include full days of a full summer school schedule, instead of one regular semester of student teaching, on the basis that that would be watering down qualifications a little bit. Then federal-wise, you guys probably know as much as I do, but again, I think I mentioned last time, the Department of Education is shifting some school funding to other departments, but is still going to cooperate some in the oversight. The reason this is becoming more important is that apparently nine of the, or three of the 12 appropriations bills were addressed in the, at the end of the government shutdown, and nine need to be addressed by the end of January, so there will be a lot of drama connected with that. But it sounds like they've been working on a consensus Health, Human Services, and Education Spending Bill. So maybe at least that won't be an area of controversy. Some of the funding that's been reassigned, for instance, is Office of Elementary and Secondary Education transferred to the Labor Department, and that involves some of the Title 1 through 5 funding that I think addresses lower-income students. The Office of Post-Secondary Education-Based Institutional Grants goes to the Labor Department, Indian Education goes to the Interior Department, On-Campus Child Support Care for Parents in College, and Foreign Medical Accreditation goes to DHHS, and International Education and Foreign Language Programs goes to the State Department. So all of that seems to make some sense, so we'll see how it works out. But that is my report, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any questions? If not, the upcoming meeting schedule, on Wednesday, December 17th, is the WSB Legal and Legislative Video Update. That webinar does not require registrations, so you can just tune in for that. The School Board Convention, January 20th through the 23rd, and then February 19th, Thursday, there is a WSB School Law Conference. So if you can attend that, please let Colleen know, and she will get you registered for that. That is the upcoming meeting schedule for tonight. Next, we get to hear from our high school students.
Kevin, just want to mention, too, the resolutions that are going to be addressed on at WASB, for which you're a delegate, I think they're online, and the ones that, there are a number that WASB recommends, or not WASB, but they're, I guess it is, yeah. The School Board, whoever, the committee.
The committee.
They, there are a number that are recommended for discussion, there are some that are recommended to be turned down. I recommend you all take a look at that.
We will be having that on our agenda for our January meeting, because we'll have a hard copy by then.
Okay, so that will be before.
Yeah, that first meeting in January, we'll have a discussion on those, anybody that wants to bring a point of interest up.
Kevin always enjoys that, you just can't pry him out of there to go to supper at all.
No. Riveting. Riveting. All right, welcome.
Hello, I'm Porter Corbin, the junior class representative.
Hello, I was here last time, my name's Hugo Acevedo Sanchez, and I'm the sophomore class rep. It's kind of just a look at our outline, a little short this week, but not too many new things at the high school.
First up, we have holiday week, that's in two weeks, I believe. And so first of all, we have our homeroom hall, homeroom hallway decorating competition, which we're going to start decorating next week during homeroom, which is on Monday. Our junior class, at least I know, has already started. Planning ours, not going to reveal any secrets, but it's going to be pretty good. That week, we also have dress-up days. PJ Day is Monday, Tuesday is Red and Green Day, Wednesday is Dress as Winter Sports, Thursday is Christmas Character/Movie, and Friday is You Dress in Your Ugly Sweaters. That same Friday, we will have a Friday activity that you can choose. The first one is the Open Gym, which you just go down there and play, or, then we have the. Then we have the Christmas movie in the auditorium and Arts and Crafts and Library Study Hall. Last year, we didn't know, they weren't as popular as the others, but we did find that it was good for kids that maybe aren't as socially, I don't know. Yeah, so.
Just a little winter sport recap. For boys hockey, they had an away game at Eau Claire Memorial, December 4th and 3-0 loss. And tomorrow night, they actually have their first home game versus Amory Coop. And then for girls' basketball, they had an away game versus Stevens Point, 60-74 loss there. And their first home game versus New Richmond, December 5th, 67-37 win. And then tomorrow night, they actually have their doubleheader, Coaches vs. Cancer game versus Cameron at 5:45, I believe. And then for boys' basketball, they had their away game at Osceola, December 4th, 29-57 loss. So and then they also, like I just said, their doubleheader tomorrow night versus New Richmond at 7:15. And then this past weekend, there was a girls' varsity invitational at Medford and they placed their team overall. And then upcoming for boys swim and dive, they have a home varsity meet versus River Falls, December 11th.
Finally, we have some small things we've done in the past weeks. We had apple cider during our resource period and we've been doing music during lunch every Friday, which they've enjoyed. This week, we're going to do 15 Seconds of Fame, which we'll have a keyboard in the lunchroom area. And if they'd like to come and play, they can. We'll also be doing High Five Friday. So we'll have teachers stationed that are secretly picked to be the secret high-five givers, I guess. And the 10th person to high-five each person will get a prize. We are also planning to put candy canes on the cars in the student parking lot and distribute hot chocolate.
Quick question, will there be any staff members or board members that want 15 Seconds of Fame? Not I.
Do it, Miriam.
Well, if they'd like to come up.
Yeah, right?
Who's to pick the music at lunch?
Student leadership members.
Okay.
But if the, if the body'd like a request there, more than welcome to.
So Porter, what extremely cold activity did you participate in last Thursday evening?
The Christmas parade.
Porter's one of the young ambassadors for the Chamber. Seven of the students really got cold, but they did a heck of a good job.
Yeah. Heard we got some compliments on our singing.
You did. You did.
All right. Any questions? Thank you.
Good job.
Okay, upcoming district events. Randy?
Yeah, just a few things. Tonight at 7 o'clock in 10 minutes, we've got the Rice Lake High School Band Winter Concert, Winter Concert in the auditorium. As these gentlemen said, tomorrow night, Coaches vs. Cancer, tomorrow night at the high school. Also tomorrow, we've got the Tainter Elementary Winter Concerts at 6:00 and 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And then on Thursday are the Hoggins and Hilltop Elementary Winter Concerts at 4:45, 5:45, and 6:45 in the high school auditorium. Just a reminder, and then we'll do a press release on this as well and send an all-school message out to parents and others. There'll be that emergency services training at the Rice Lake Middle School on Monday, December 22nd from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. So I don't know exactly what's going to happen. I don't know if Mrs. Leaf, Mr. Tomisch, but I assume there's going to be lots of emergency vehicles and other things around. So we just want to give people a heads up on that. And then winter break for students and most staff, December 22nd through January 2nd. School resumes on Monday, the 5th. And as always, please continue to check our social media for a great number of things happening in the district.
All right. Thank you for that. Now, I would entertain a motion to convene into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin Statutes 19.851(c). And this is for the approval of our closed session meeting minutes from Monday, November 24th.
I would move to go to closed.
Motion has been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Don Kuski.
Yes.
Andrew Coop.
Yes.
Phil Henkel.
Eric.
Kevin Jensen.
Yes.
Miriam Barbara.
Yes.
Bert Richard.
Yes.
Nellie Shire.
Yes.
Doug Kuchko.
Yes.
And Laurie Zarbar.
Yes.
All right. So before we go into officially closing, we're going to do a quick little video for our tidbit.
We have a song.